Let me know when you're ready.
Go Dave.
Meeting called to order today is Tuesday, February 4th. It is now seven ten PM. Town Council meeting in the Town Council chambers, eleven seventy Main Street, West Warwick Road Island. Uh, John, we lead us some prayer.
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we pray for your divine presence this evening. Bless this body with your Holy Spirit. Guide our discussions and our actions as the choices we make impact the welfare of others. Dear Lord, we ask that you bless this great town and all of her many citizens. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Chief, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Luchardi?
He is home with the flu. He excused his, uh, please excuse his absence, he said.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President Tomico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Discussion, action, vote of Town Council. Any matters of, on this portion of the agenda may be acted upon by way of topic discussion and action of, by the Town Council with a vote on the record to approve, amend, deny, or table the agenda item. Ordinance twenty twenty dash two, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin and ordinance amending Article One, Section twelve dash four, public intoxication and Section twelve dash four, one, consumption and possession of alcohol in public of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
A second. Move in second. Discussion, Al.
Uh, members of councils, I sent to you when you're even-
Just want to turn the mic on. I don't think they can hear you back good.
Uh, as I sent to you in my email, uh, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month or so, we received a letter from the ACLU, uh, commenting that two provisions of our ordinance regarding public drinking and public intoxication were in violation of the state law. When David sent me the letter from the ACLU, I reviewed it and I had to agree with him. I prepared, with David's authority, I prepared the ordinance that I've presented to you. Before I sent it to you, I sent it to, uh, Colonel Knott and he reviewed it with the majors and they came back and that they are in agreement that we should remove, uh, repeal those sections of our ordinance. It puts the police department in a position where they have an ordinance telling to enforce things that the state law says they don't have any authority to enforce. So by repealing those two sections, we just bring our ordinance in, in coordination with our state statute.
Any questions for Al?
So, under twelve four, when it says reserved?
Well, what happened was I've repealed them.
Okay.
So, because of, because the way our ordinance is set up, I'd have to move every other ordinance up a number. So I just leave it reserved. There's nothing there now.
So how does this affect when the council votes to allow alcohol at a public event? Does this have anything to do with that?
No. No, this is the guy drinking, the person drinking on the street corner.
So, drinking or just being intoxicated? It looks like it covers both, right?
Both.
Yeah, okay. Public intoxication.
It, it's, it's now in compliance with the state law. I mean, it, it's not, you know, as I, days gone by, it was different.
What's that?
I said, under Judge Layton, it was different.
Yeah.
And Judge Layton would say that Sergeant O'Connell will take you to Cranston City Line and you get off, I put you on probation, you come back, I'm sending you to jail. We can't do that anymore.
No. They don't give you the drive, they don't give you the drive to the line anymore.
No.
Any other questions for Al? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Ordinance twenty twenty dash three, first reading sponsored by Councilman Messier and ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic Ordinances of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
A second. Move in second, Al.
This request came from the postmaster to Major Oshinbo. Uh, the parking lot for the employees is behind the post office as they pull out onto Roosevelt Street to the left between, uh, the exit to the parking lot and, uh-
J.C.'s Butcher Shop.
Yeah, the, they can't, their, their vision's blocked. So just that very short space, it's like one car that he's asking a, uh, no parking sign. Traffic committee approved it and that's what we're requesting tonight. I spoke to Councilman Messier about it.
Any comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting resolved. The minutes of the January seventh, twenty twenty Town Council meeting, January twenty one, twenty twenty Executive Session, January twenty one, twenty twenty Town Council meeting are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Second. Any discussion?
I don't.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent, consent agenda license application resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Um, Mary Beth, I mean, uh, Mary Ann, I'm gonna, there's a couple on here I have to recuse myself for, so I am going to recuse myself. Um, as far as I know, Councilman Messier does not have to, so we still have a quorum of three.
From all the vote?
Yep.
Okay.
Any comment from council? Any public council? Excuse me, public comment? Hearing none, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it. Licenses pass.
Okay. Cancellation of taxes resolved that the attached cancellations in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-three cents presented to the tax assessor for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article twenty-five, Section five of the West Warwick, Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the Office of the Tax Assessor.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, Sal.
This is a portion of the border review appeals for the two thousand nineteen taxes. That's what, that's, that's what this list is.
Just, um, can I just ask the one, the biggest one on the list is the Bronzy and, and that was the reason for that, or?
He, he neglected to use his accountant when he filled out his form and he ended up double reporting things between here and Providence where he had moved some of his equipment, some stayed. Uh, I know the accountant, that he came with them to the board meeting and he explained to us.
Any questions for, uh, Sal? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Can we just have that door open, please? Thank you.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a new twenty twenty Ford five fifty four by four super duty light lifeline type one A D class one emergency medical vehicle. The town has joined with the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program. New vehicle, rescue vehicle to be purchased from specialty vehicles in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, a new life pack fifteen from Stryker Medical in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents, and a new power stretcher from Stryker Medical for nineteen thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, new mobile radio for the rescue from tactical communications in the amount of ten thousand two-hundred-and-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and a new laptop computer from Dell Marketing in the amount of two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents for an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand forty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. The funding for this purchase will be through a four-year lease agreement. The lease will be paid from the Rescue Equipment Expense Fund, one eight oh four zero zero eight oh four zero five eight zero zero, sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Move the resolution.
Second. Chief?
Uh, good evening. Yeah, that's a lot. That's a lot.
When you text me, you talk to me about just an ambulance and then-
Yeah, yeah, then you get all this. So, um, it doesn't, it doesn't include a lot of the, um, things. So, the life packs that we have right now, which are the EKG and defibrillating machines, um, that we use, um, won't be serviced just like every other technical device. Um, so they won't be, um, you know, under care, um, going forward. So it's a good idea that we get these now with this apparatus. Um, all of the ancillary machines, like the, the Stryker, um, power stretchers, they, they help reduce injuries. So, um, they're, the one that we'd be replacing is, uh, four and a half years old. And, um, so all, all of the equipment that goes along with it comes out, um, to three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the rescue's, uh, one of the busiest apparatus that we have. Uh, it truly is a, a life, um, life and death situation, making sure that they run properly. They're all close to about a hundred thou, the, this rescue is close to a hundred thousand miles on it. So it, it is time to get changed, even though it's only four and a half years old. Um, there is one problem that I need to bring up to you and, and that is, um, on the Secretary of State's website, there was a, there was an error made in the resolution, the first resolution, when the agenda was, um, amended. There was a, um, a mistake on the original agenda that was corrected on the amended agenda, but the attachment, the corrective attachment wasn't listed. So the agenda, uh, the attachment on the Secretary of State's website is not the attachment that you got. And there is a, um, I don't know if that's going to create a problem. So I wanted to bring that up to you so you could make a informed decision.
Chief, what was the heading on the, uh, posting for the Secretary of State? Was it this big heading?
Um, the, the resolution is, was, as it was correct.
Verbatim what it says here.
It was exactly what it says, with the exception of the, the heading of the resolution.
Okay.
So the heading of the resolution says that it is the Lucas External Chest Compression Device. Okay? So-
It's not the one on our agenda.
It is not the one that is on your agenda. Okay? So, um, I don't know if we need to table it for that reason.
Is time of the essence in this matter?
It is not.
Then I would, I would make a motion that we table the agenda item out of abundance of caution.
All right, just so, okay.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Claims resolved with the Town Council hereby approves or denies the following claim against the town. Um, Robert Gisaldi?
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second. Don, you want to just come on up? Again, this is Robert Gisaldi, two-twenty-seven Ligrisav, town tree fell on shed. Um, actually, I need a- Oh, yeah, make a motion to take it off the table?
You're right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Um, the Department of Public Work recommends the Town Council that the claim for the shed damage in the amount of seven eighty for Inex Building be paid. Other quotes were in the amounts of eight hundred and twenty from MC Renovations and eight fifty from ADM Construction. Um, again, I think we agreed on this last council meeting, but there wasn't enough information. Does everybody feel there's enough information with pictures?
Yes.
I mean, I, I don't think we should spend all night on this. I think we spent a lot of time in the last two meetings. Um, any concerns?
No, you asked to have the dollar amount put in there. We put the dollar amount and the, the bids in there. So hopefully we can move on it.
And I apologize. I need a motion to move the resolution. Make a motion to move the resolution.
Second.
Second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
Claim resolved with the Town Council hereby approves or denies the following claim against the town, Crystal Rosa. Do you want me to read this whole?
Yes, please.
Nineteen Lowell Street, pothole claim on Phoenix Avenue previously tabled. The Department of Public Work has reviewed the Rosa claim. The claim was not recorded in a lot of time for a pothole claim, which is seven business days. The Department of Public Work recommends that this claim not be paid in the amount asking the three quotes were as follows. Higher Warehouse, three twelve thirty-two. Town Fair Tire, three forty-two sixteen. BMW of Warwick, three forty-three forty-six.
Move to take it off the table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move the resolution.
Second. Discussion. Um, this claim, I, I understand the seven business days, but what, what I'm more concerned about is, um, a pothole. I travel the road several times a day, spoke to, uh, department. I'm just paraphrasing, but, um, in skip, truck in for, uh, for service and in skip told them they had a bubble in their tire due to hitting pothole. Um, I mean, first, there's no picture of any pothole.
Guessing at the pothole they hit.
And I don't know what pothole. It could be any pothole anywhere across the state of Rhode Island. I could just say it was on Phoenix Ave. It doesn't really say much. It just says- Says there are several potholes. Several potholes on Phoenix Ave. And there was a couple of large ones. I'm not going to deny that, but because they're in the stillers, um, we have a sinkage over there. But again, there's no pictures of where this pothole was. So that's my only concern. I, I'd actually award this if there was pictures of showing where the pothole was. I mean, but that's just my opinion. If anybody else has one.
Well, I mean, it, it doesn't meet the seven days and that's what, that's the requirement that we have.
In fact, there's a large gap.
Yes, it's not like it's, it's not like it's ten days or it's over a weekend or a holiday or anything, so.
I, I, like I said, I, I, if there was pictures and showed me where they hit it and whatever, because sometimes people don't even know they did it, but it's just, so do I have a motion to approve or a motion to disunapprove or whatever you want to call it? Deny?
I'll make a motion to deny the claim.
A second. Move in second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Claim has been denied.
Resignation from the West Warwick Zoning Board of Review, Jeffrey Hunt.
I'll move the resolution.
Second. Move in second. Um, again, as anybody can see, his resignation letter, it, if it's still on here, um, it's only because he left the town. He represented well on that board. Um, he wished he could stay on it, but unfortunately he did move to Coventry. So, um, with that being said, does anybody else have any comment? Hearing none. Mary Ann, if you can just write a thank you letter to the individual for their time and service, that'd be great. And, uh, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Discussion, action, surveillance cameras update sponsored by Town Manager.
At a previous meeting, there was a discussion about, uh, receiving some information about installing cam, surveillance, surveillance cameras in the front of the building, the entranceway and the back parking lot, uh, door. I met with a representative from Cox Business Solutions and to talk about the installations that we discussed at a council meeting. Uh, regarding the door at the, uh, back parking lot, uh, what would be proposed there is just a, uh, simple camera that is attached to the building, similar to what we see at the police and fire stations. That would capture the entryway door as well as the parking lots, some of the parking lot, and between the police station, the town hall, and the fire department. Uh, that would cover pretty much the entire back, back lot, uh, with no problem. Uh, we proceeded to go to the, you know, the, uh, front, uh, front of the building, the entryway, and I discussed the, uh, the areas that were discussed to be covered, you know, the, the, uh, entryway, the stairs, uh, the walkway, sidewalk and crosswalk, and maybe a little bit of the, uh, sidewalk, uh, across the street. And the recommendation there was for a camera similar to, well, a camera similar to the front of the, uh, police station where it would be on a bracket coming out away from the building. It can be angled to cover that area, you know, uh, the entryway, the stairs, uh, the, uh, handicapped, uh, entryway, sidewalk, crosswalk, and a little bit of the sidewalk. So to do that, uh, we'd have two new cam, two new cameras. And again, uh, like anything else, whether it be anything electronics, uh, uh, cameras today at two-thousand-and-twenty are better than the cameras. I'm assuming at two-thousand-and-fifteen is when, uh, the town did the interior surveillance work. And the cost is very nominal, uh, for the, uh, installation. The two cameras, uh, activated, activation setup fees are a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, the monthly fee would be thirty-one ninety-eight for, uh, thirty-six months. So it would be a thousand dollars, one thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars twenty-eight cents. So to have the exterior, the back parking lot covered, again, which would cover the entire lot with the other cameras that are there. The front, uh, camera, which would cover the areas that we discussed, uh, would be one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents, because that, the monthly, uh, fee would be for a thirty-six month basis.
And that's for the two cameras, not for a camera?
Yeah, for the two cameras. So the installation is virtually, you know, minimal and the monthly fee is for thirty-six months. Uh, we talked about which side the, uh, camera would go on and, uh, uh, if this proposal were accepted, uh, the technician would come out and figure out the best way. I did indicate to him that there were some difficulties. Uh, it could, there may be some difficulties with installation considering, you know, the, 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 uh, brick and, and so on. Uh, but, you know, he was assured that, you know, that could be done. So that's what, uh, the basis for my, my discussion was. And again, at the last meeting, the council wanted to be briefed before any action was taken. Looking back to two-thousand-and-fifteen, a resolution of the council, uh, was adopted, uh, to, uh, for the installation of the interior work. So in my mind, this could be done by a resolution and, uh, as well, or considering the lower dollar amounts, uh, a, uh, action, a motion of the council, you know, would be sufficient as well. But again, and there's no anticipated action here. Just, uh, bring it back to the council for any of your questions. And, uh, and, uh, based upon that, uh, we could move forward at the next meeting.
Put, put on the next meeting as a resolution, then?
It could be done, sure.
Some of the discussion, I believe, at the last meeting or when we talked about it, was that we had extra cameras here that we purchased.
Right. I think there were, what?
Four extras, or?
No, the, when I spoke to him the other day, um, I talked pretty low. When I spoke to him the other day, um, I asked him about that. I said, we have fourteen cameras technically. If you need to use two of them before we, well, since we did this five years ago, um, it's now sixteen cameras. So we have fourteen cameras we're using in the capacity for sixteen. And he, I had asked about, does he want to use four? He said, no, he thinks two will span the front and the back fine. So we don't have to do anything with any cameras.
So there's no removing anything? It'll just be no cameras?
They'll just pop up on our screens and on the, in the police stations, automatically. If he needs two more for any reason, if you decide to expand, we can do that.
I just didn't know if the cost, but I, you did say the quality is better now than-
Well, again, uh, with technology, you know, uh, you buy a, a phone and six months later, a new version comes out much better.
That's my daughter. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so, so, uh, these cameras would be the best, you know, what they have.
Okay.
As opposed to what the best they had, you know, two, you know, five years ago.
Okay.
And again, the cost is really minimal and it accomplishes, you know, what I think we need to accomplish.
I, I just want to correct you on something that is, and we're not taking any action on this. I just wanted to listen.
Sure.
The cameras, are they looking at bullet camera or dome camera? Because when you said arms sticking out, I don't, I, I don't know what you meant by this.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, sorry, it's my, my lack of understanding the terminology. The one outside would be like a, a round one attached to the, uh, building, similar to what the police and fire have.
Fire department, okay.
So it's similar to that. The other one would look more like a camera with, uh, an arm extending out to whatever angle it needs to be done.
Comes out twelve inches.
Okay.
So, again, next agenda, I, I will recuse myself from the vote. I just wanted to hear what was offered.
All right. Thank you.
Director's Report sponsored by Town Manager, a tax assessor.
Mr. President, I'd make the request of the council to table this matter. The violation of the OMA would be in place because there's nothing besides director's reports and then the name of each department head.
So all of them, you're asking?
All of them.
All right. I want to make a motion to, uh, table, what do we, where, he said all of them. Before we make a motion, how, how do you want this to show on the agenda?
It has to be a little bit more than just director's reports. That's to indicate that you're talking about capital, their finances, anything, or less than personnel. This has been addressed before and I don't know why-
Does the report need to be attachment?
The attachments are fine.
Yeah.
But on the agenda itself, it has to be a little bit more than just their name and just report.
Yeah, because last month, last, well, two weeks ago was more specific than this.
Yeah, a month ago was more specific. So I don't know why it was changed.
That being said, the, the report that was provided, um, actually is comprehensive and I appreciate the effort that went into it. Um, I, I would also recommend that in the future, um, the attachment be there and some specificity, but people don't need to come up and read their reports necessarily. Um, we, we need to, to, uh, make it as concise as possible, but I would agree, so.
Yeah, I mean, for example, last month said finance director's report and then it was, I mean, I don't have to read the whole thing, but it was, it was, it was-
Correct.
There's much more substance. Again, I don't know why that was not continued.
All right, I have a motion to table. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Let's clarify, that's tabling all the director's reports, tax assessor. All the director's reports.
So, so may I ask one more? I'm sorry. Can there be a heading that's descriptive or, or, so maybe we can get some guidance as to what that should-
Sure, but my heading would be, for example, timeframe. If it's going to be a month or a quarter. Secondly, what, the synopsis of what the memo is speaking of.
Absolutely.
And as long as it doesn't deal with personnel or specific, uh, employees, you can put anything you want. But it's just going to be a little bit more substantive.
All right. Thank you.
Update on Factory Street Playground Cost. Itemized review of costs associated with Factory Street Playground totaling one hundred and forty-five thousand and six hundred dollars. Sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Mark?
May I approach the council?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Council President, council members, um, we're here, I guess this evening to discuss what may appear to be a discrepancy in the bid amounts and the cost of work for the Factory Street Playground. Um, some time ago, I think I did provide to the council a chronology of events and a host of backup material, uh, in support of the chronology. And in the interim, I reached out to the contractor, Probuilt Designs, and again reiterated to them and asked them for clarification as to the bid document and the bid award that they had submitted. I think it was back in twenty eighteen. Um, so I think the way that, uh, the bid specifications were written and presented, it broke the project down into two separate parts. And then it also asked for an overall price. So with the understanding that the town could, uh, separate the bid awards, they could purchase equipment off of one contractor or supplier and have a contractor install someone else's equipment, or we could have the whole project completed, uh, by a single contractor. So the way the bid specifications were written, it requested a bid price for the equipment only, installation only, and then a complete project, equipment, install, construction of a playground. And I think some of the confusion comes in here in that when the town awarded the bid, they awarded it to one contractor, uh, for a complete project. And that contractor in submitting their bid included an amount of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for purchase of the equipment. They also included a price of forty-five thousand, I think, seven hundred dollars or six- They also included a price of $45,000, I think $700 or $600, $45,600, I believe, for the cost of the install of the equipment. They included a complete price of $145,600 for the complete project. Equipment installed, complete playground project. Now, when the town was reviewing the bids, the bid review started with the Recreation Committee. For various reasons, the Recreation Committee was having difficulty pulling together a quorum for formal action. And the chairman of the Recreation Committee approached me at the time and he pointed out a discrepancy in the bid award numbers and asked me to check into that.
This discrepancy?
Discrepancy. And that was, if you add the equipment plus the install, there's a gap of $10,000 between the complete project and just the install and equipment. When I called the vendor at the time, he explained to me that within the, the bid specifications, there were no line items to include the fencing, which was called out in the bid, as well as ground cover. It didn't explicitly state the type of ground cover, it said ground cover. So what his assistant did, the person who does the awards, was they included the price just for installs if they were installing someone else's equipment and materials. They included the price for the equipment, but when you add them together, if they were doing the whole project, they would also have to provide value for a fence in the ground cover. The cost of the fence and the ground cover at the time, was explained to me, was an additional $10,000. That's why the complete project had a cost of $145.6. Going back and revisiting that, I was asked to try to get from that contractor some kind of a statement clarifying, and that's what I'm presenting to you today. I received an email on Monday from Pro Built Designs and I'm going to read this. Says, "Hi Mark, regarding the invoice for West Warwick, I know there's a bit of confusion. The cost of the play equipment from Landscape Structures was $89,900. The cost of the installation of the play equipment was $45,700. There was no line item for additional cost in install of wood fiber and chain link fence, which was an additional $10,000. The scope of the work for the total bid price was $145,600. I hope this clarifies your questions." In, in response to that, I asked them for a further breakdown because, you know, $10,000 sounds like a, a pretty round number. And I said, "Can you break down the $10,000 for the cost of the fence and the ground cover for me so that I know what those items cost individually?" And they responded, "Today, Mark, to furnish and install wood fiber, the cost was $5,750. To furnish and install the chain link fence, the cost was $4,250." So if you add all of these things together, the total cost of the project is $145,600. I think if you go back and you look at the documentation that was submitted to the council at the time, including the resolution that the council authorized, it spelled out in the resolution clear in one of the whereas's. "The review committee has reviewed bids and recommending the purchase of playground equipment and installation and construction, installation and construction of a playground to Pro Built Designs in an amount not to exceed $145,600." That was the price for the equipment, install and construction of the playground. That was the bid price, that was the award price, that was the, that was the amount that was invoiced to the town and that was the amount that the town paid to the contractor for the complete project.
Just want to clarify a couple of things too. I know last council meeting, it was said that the person came in and got the check of $145,000 and went over to Citizens Bank and cashed it. That's untrue. That was cashed at Rockland Trust, which is, it was deposited at Rockland Trust and eventually cashed at Citizens Bank. Because that's where, is our bank. So just want to clarify that, because I know that was brought up in the last council meeting. Does anybody here from the council have any questions to Mark?
Actually, Mark, I would just ask, so it was my understanding that the, the bid did include, or the, the RFP that went out, did include ground cover and, and the documents, one of the documents you did provide to us talked about bid amount installation, playground equipment and construction. And construction was the 45.7. So I'm still a little confused, to be honest with you. And I know that you, I, I knew that there was another vendor that we actually did not look at. And I think their bid was somewhere in a $112,000 range because they did not include fencing and ground cover. I can't come up with the name of that particular vendor, to be honest with you. But you provided that information to us earlier.
So.
So that was 112 and the fencing and ground cover.
I don't think, I don't think, any, from the time, and I remember the Recreation Committee having a conversation, I don't think, I don't think there was any as low as this one, the which combined everything being done though.
Well, again, I think that one was 112.
But I don't think it included.
Fencing and ground cover.
It did not include fencing.
So, so fencing and ground cover was only 10?
But it didn't include it. This included fencing and ground cover for $10,000. The other one did not include fencing. So when you go out to bid, you're asking for specific items, the items a bid upon. If someone does not bid on an item, you cannot go back to them afterwards and say, "How much would you pay for that item?" Because now the, the bid price has been presented to the town. It is public, so that person can simply give you a bid amount less than what someone else had bid for the project. So specifically on that bid document, if you look at it, it's written, it's typed into the document, does not include fencing, which would say, "Well, they're not including the fencing, so their bid is incomplete." It didn't include something we're looking for, it's incomplete, it should, it could, should be disqualified.
And it, and it was.
Yes.
Again, again, because we just received this tonight. I guess, so if Pro Built could do that for $10,000, and maybe that's, I don't, I have no idea what the going cost of ground cover and fencing is, but $10,000 plus 112 would be 122, which was far less.
It would be, but they didn't, they didn't include that in their bid. So there, I would have to go back to them and they'll say, "Well, they can look at the other bids and say, 'What did these people bid a fence for?' And they could underbid that."
Yeah, and at the time, were, were you, were you at those meetings with the Recreation Committee?
I was not.
Yeah, I mean, at the time, I know, I know Councilman Luchardi was at that time correct and I know that Chris Messier, and I'm not sure what other members, maybe, maybe Freddie Gill was there as well. But I know they were the one, they also recommended at that time Pro Built as well. And again, I don't remember all the reasons.
Suffice it to say that it's been done, it's, it's completed. Optics aren't great, I think we all agree on that, or all can, can agree on that. So, so whether we need to put procedures in place that tighten things up. Again, in my mind, when I look at a bid, if you break it out and it's two prices, you add it together, it should be lower, not higher, that kind of thing. I thought that the bid document actually did include originally. So I would think that in B, in number three, bid amount for installation of playground would include wood chips and fence. Again, I wasn't there, so I can't, I can't speak to that, so.
It, it, I, I wouldn't disagree with you. It may in some person's interpretation, in your interpretation, perhaps even in my interpretation. So that's why we called the contractor for clarification. Why is, what, and, and could they have said instead of 45.7 for the install, 55.7? They could have, but they didn't. So when we call for clarification, they're, "What's the difference? Well, you wanted to include fencing and ground cover. We didn't know where to put that, so we put it in the overall price." Because if we were, if we were installing someone else's equipment, we would be installing potentially someone else's fence and someone else's ground cover, or someone else would install the ground cover.
Well, I agree with you, it should, it should have been a line item, I guess, it should have been on there.
And it must have been somehow because somebody.
Chris, Chris Messier was the one that questioned at the time.
Somebody questioned it and, and another company specifically said, "This does not include fencing," so.
And the, and the other company included it all. The other company that included it all came in at $186,581. That was everything.
Correct.
So it was.
So, again, I think that we, at a minimum, should be a lesson learned that we need to be a little more diligent in making sure what we, what we, and it was, I think at the last meeting, there was also a conversation about what happened in the building official's office and actually the fact that the.
Building permit was issued after they were paid.
So that, we probably should address that, and I don't know that that falls under your purview.
It does not, but you are correct, the building permit was applied for.
Sometime in February, I, I believe.
Well, I, I think, and this is just from my recollection, was we called for an inspection or the town, when I say we, the town called for an inspection and obviously the building official has to go inspect it. He says, "There's no permit." And that has happened a few times throughout the history where somebody called for an inspection or they didn't have a permit yet and they, they're told to come in. For instance, if a building official drives by, sees construction going on, they started on a Saturday, they've had to go in on a Monday or whatever and, and apply for that permit.
It's like they applied for the permit on December 3rd.
And, and I think it was issued after, after we paid, after we paid them. I mean, so all that, again, the optics on the whole, the case as a whole are not good.
I don't know, no, when, when was the project started and when did it be completed?
I, I.
It was right around that time.
It's in the, it's in the.
It was the beginning of December when the project.
November, November, it was completed in November.
At the end of, the very end of November then, so, okay.
And it was applied for on December 3rd.
Okay, so right when it started, okay.
So.
It wasn't, it was inspected prior to the application for the permit.
It, I'm sorry, it wasn't?
It wasn't, yeah, the building official saw it.
And then said, came back and said, "I don't have a permit, so there's a disconnect, so you got to file for the permit."
I, I.
And, and I.
I'm not in the building office, so I can't really elaborate on all of that, but that's my understanding.
I mean, I think it's important that we address the issues that came up at the last meeting and, and that was one of them, so, yeah.
Any other questions for Mark from the council? Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
You can bring it up at public comment. I've had public comment on ordinances and licenses only. That's what I've asked for public comment and that's what I've been doing every meeting. Thank you. Yes, please.
Names of individuals who are interested in participating to be on the Charter Review Committee sponsored by Council President Goslin.
So I asked the council to reach out to whoever they'd like for the Charter Review Committee. It's done once every 10 years, this is the 10th year. Councilman Luchardi did text me his three names. Some of us have some same names because individuals reached out to some of us, all of us, or none of us. But again, I can start with.
Can I just ask about this process?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so I assume that we have, we have gotten names, we've talked to people, that it's a committee that we would have to go sit through the same process, they'd have to fill out an application, have a background check and. And hopefully, on that application, give us some background that we can provide to the public because it is a major undertaking and obviously affects the, the town long-term that gives background that might be.
So, so the process goes as, as the Charter Review Committee decide, once we decide, they would have to come in, fill out the application, go through all the same process, if they haven't already, because there are some people who are on other boards or whatever that asked to.
Would they, would they need to, I don't think they.
Re-fill out if they're going to be on a separate board?
Lord says in the charters, "The town council shall appoint a charter review commission of nine members." All the elect, assuming all nine members shall be electors and residents of the town and not more than five of whom shall be members of the same political party. It doesn't say anything else about whether or not you can be or you're prohibited from picking someone else that's already on an appointed board.
No, but first, do they need to fill out the same, like if they were, if they already filled out the paperwork to be on the zoning board, do they need to fill out, do they need to go, fill out, fill it out again?
I would suggest that, yes, and in abundance of caution, if you're going to apply for this, do the same, follow the same process that you've had.
But obviously if you.
If you have, if you have a background check that's still valid.
It's still valid, you don't need to do it again.
I assume you don't need to do that again.
Correct, yeah.
No, no.
Once a year is fine for the background check. And also, so as they meet, they set their ground rules, do whatever, they'll select the chairperson. They'll work through everything, but ultimately, the council has the last say.
And not having done this before, do we, do we provide, do we hire any consultant to help guide through that process?
We didn't in the past. I've only done one, so.
No.
We had.
If there are, if there are questions.
We had an attorney on the board last time, so he was able to answer some of those questions if there was any legal matters or anything, so.
And I assume that this board, this committee will report back or maybe be a standing item on a town council agenda so we know where that process is, where it stands.
Believe it or not, you're able to attend those meetings also.
And they also can utilize the solicitor's office if there are questions because sometimes issues come up, the last time one of the significant issues was whether or not the town council could override and overrule the school committee, which state law prohibits. The sole, what they wanted to basically do with Providence has done in the past, but Providence has an appointed school committee, not an elected school committee. So there was clarification needed there.
What's that?
Who's going first?
Um, well, I'll, I'll start off, because some of us do have the same names. I know I was speaking to each and every one of you. So I'll just go off the six names that I know. Richard Banks from Councilman Luchardi. Angelo Padula from Councilman Luchardi. Chris Boucher from Councilman Luchardi, and I know I reached out to Chris also. Anna Spotnick Goldenese, I reached out to her. Joe Barris, who reached out to me, and Ed Giroux, who reached out to me. So that's the six names that I know that have come out. So if Mary Beth, if I don't have anybody on your, that list, and you've got others, please share.
I actually have Judy O'Leett.
How do you spell the last name, Dian?
O-U-E-L-L-E-T-T-E.
Okay.
And Dr. Chris Black.
And again, I, Mary Beth, we need to get, like I know the affiliation of Chris Boucher, he is Republican, he's the Republican chairperson. Angelo, I think, is unaffiliated. Richard Banks, I don't know if he's unaffiliated or Republican.
I believe he's unaffiliated. Joe Barris is also unaffiliated.
Okay, Councilman, former Councilman Giroux was a Democrat. Anna Spotnick Goldenese is actually a registered Democrat. So Richard Banks is a U. So Ju- Judy O'Leett and Dr.
I believe she's a Democrat.
Okay.
And I believe Dr. Black is a Republican.
Okay.
I'd like to offer the name, well, I spoke to Joe Barris, he was definitely on my list. Alan Horak, he's a Republican.
How do you spell that?
Alan Horak. I believe it's H-O-R-A-K.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That is my list.
Yeah, you had mine on there and I, when I reached out to Barbara Tabak, but she wasn't able to do it this time because she was on the last, she was on the last board. Was it 10 years ago?
No, that is nine.
So what's the balance? What was it again? We need how many Republicans, Democrats?
Oh, yeah, you have three Democrats, three Republicans, three unaffiliated, you can't. It's pretty easy. That is nine. But we have two weeks, because I know I did reach out to two other individuals that have not returned their call.
I have reached out to other individuals as well.
I also reached out to one who has not gone back.
So we can go.
And I didn't leave a message as to really what it was all about, just because, yeah.
And again.
Because you wanted to call back.
So these nine names will be on the agenda. If anybody else has any names between now and that, put it on the agenda next meeting. But right now, if it's nine, it's nine, it's pretty cut and dry.
I would suggest, and I don't know all of these individuals, I think I know most, actually, I might know all of them. It would be nice to have a diverse group.
That's a very diverse group.
No, that's politically. I'm not talking just politically. I mean, age, demographics, the whole thing, men, women, which I'm happy to see there, there's more than. So I, I think having some younger people might not be a bad idea either. Whether there are student leaders and/or college people or young, younger attorneys.
And there's a lot of time and I talked to some people that just weren't interested in unfortunately putting on the time. Yeah, so, I mean, it is, it's definitely needed, so, I mean, we appreciate the people that came forward, but.
Does the council also want to make the announcement? Does the council also want to make the announcement on the website that you're looking for candidates?
It's not a bad idea.
I think we should.
And maybe somebody should reach out to
Superintendent?
Well, they've got to be 18.
I'm saying, like the newspaper, maybe the newspaper of Kendra wants to do maybe something to reach out to
But that is definitely a diverse group, so, I mean.
So on the next agenda, we're gonna, we're gonna do basically the same exercise, that we're gonna bring some of these names forward to the next agenda to
Yep. I, I would suggest, and, and here, here's what my suggestion is, because some individuals have said, depends on what the makeup looks like, they may or may not be interested anymore. So at that point, you know, we might want to look at maybe picking nine and then two alternates in case somebody withdraws. Now, they're not going to serve as alternates on the board, they're not, but as us as council members, if, if somebody decides, let's just say, Dr. Chris Black says, I've, I've changed my mind from now to then, and we have two individuals that the council can decide on, at least we can put one of those individuals forward.
Your power is restricted to nine. However, should there be other people interested, if one of the original nine backs off, you could then contact anybody else that shows interest. Doesn't allow for additional two.
So is, is the quorum makeup, does it have to be a quorum of
Five.
Of this part, so you have to have at least five for each meeting then.
Right.
And again, and that's a lot of questions that they've asked, like when are they going to meet? That's all going to be discussed between the group, when they can meet and when they can't meet.
Again, the parameters are usually given, when, if there are any changes to be made, utilize the Secretary of State as to what's the drop dead date that matters can be presented for the printing on the ballot.
Now, the question I have, should the clerk be there to tape these minutes?
I would suggest that the clerk and/or her designee be there, absolutely.
That way there, because this will be viewed on the internet.
So if they're open meetings.
It's open meetings, it's, it's making sure their agendas are posted because it's unfair to, and I'll just say, Chris comes up and he's the chairman, it's unfair to him to post an agenda that he's just going to say, Charter Review Committee, and he might not know the wording, and Chris, I'm sorry, I put you on the spot for it, but if, that way there, the clerk's office understands the wording, make sure they put the proper wording in, make sure it's posted properly, and also that all the equipment is working properly. You can't, I mean, you can't depend on any one of these individuals to run that equipment, so I think those meetings should be also attended by the clerk or the deputy clerk, either one.
They'll designate their own clerk?
No, you'd be the clerk, you or you designate. Any questions or concerns with that? Mary Beth, did you write those names down?
I did.
I mean, Mary Ann, I keep saying Mary.
Oh, that's all right.
Mary, Mary, Mary Ann.
Yeah.
I have a recording.
Okay.
And some of them I do, but I'm
And again, it looks like it's, no, no party is favored here, so three, three, and three.
Are we clear, are we clear on all the affiliations for all those members?
And we'll just double check it.
We'll double check those.
I mean, that's what we went by, and we'll go through the board of canvases, that's her department, and we'll go from there. And if anybody else is interested, please reach out to your councilman or our councilwoman, or person, woman, and show your interest.
When is, did you say there's like an estimated deadline of when we have to approve any items? Is there an estimated time of when we have to have these items approved to get on the ballot? Is it like 90 days, 60 days?
For the general election, the Secretary of State will notify the clerk as to what the drop dead date is, to get the information for printing purposes alone, so that usually, we can get that information pretty quickly, and that can be provided.
Because this board's going to have to have their meetings, and then they're going to bring, because I've never been part of this process, they're going to bring their, their suggestions to the council, and the council will approve.
They'll have public meetings, and then what, what'll happen is that, as a result of the public hearings, they will make a recommendation to the council, the council can then approve, and then, once that happens, then it gets sent to the attorney, excuse me, the Secretary of State, but I think the clerk could probably find that out within the next week as what the tentative dates are, so that, that can already be in the file, and that, and that knowledge can be provided to any members of the board.
And then, and this is the first time, I believe, in speaking with Barbara Tabak, that, that putting it, is actually one of the items, putting it on the referendum is actually one of the things that was changed last time, I believe. Correct?
No.
No, no.
They, they came back with a list, I think, of 10 items.
Okay.
Put on the referendum. I think we put six.
Okay.
Some, I think they all passed, I think, I'm not sure if they all passed, though one did not pass. I think it was Mayor. Is that the word? Might have been Mayor, Mayor or former governor.
They changed the point of the town meeting to the all-day referendum.
Yeah, all-day referendum, so it could be different.
So Mary Ann, you will reach out to Secretary of State. Thank you.
Do you want this on the website?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Election update, April 28th Presidential Preference Primary, sponsored by Council President Goslin. I asked President Goslin if I could just quickly give an update of the Presidential Preference Primary, so people are aware. The deadline to register to vote for the April 28th Presidential Preference Primary is March 29th. That's the same date, and we will be open on that Sunday for people to register to vote. That same date is their deadline for voters to disaffiliate. So if you're in a party and you want to vote in the other party for the primary, you have to disaffiliate. It's 30 days prior to that. And, and as I said, the, there will be a lot more information coming as we go, but I just thought those two deadlines were pretty important for people to be aware of. They will be on the website as well. If anybody has any questions, Carrie Nada Lillo is our Board of Camper clerk and very helpful, so feel free to call her anytime. And that's all I have. I just wanted to give those two dates.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, can I just, one more thing. There is a new polling station at Sacred Heart Church that we'll be using for the Presidential Preference Primary at this time. You will be getting postcards, it's going to be in the paper, robocalls, we're doing quite a bit, but just so you know, Ward One will be voting at Sacred Heart for the Presidential Preference Primary.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion regarding curbside textile recycling in the Town of West Warwick contract to discuss payments made to the Town of West Warwick and nonprofit organizations sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Jay?
So I, I put this on the agenda because fortunately, some stuff came on social media about this, and it was, it was totally news to me about the curbside textile recycling program and potentially them either not giving the donations that they had promised to the nonprofit organizations, and Ernie can clarify that, that really doesn't have anything to do with the town, but to me, if it wasn't made, it would, it would affect the town, because it's somebody we do business with, and whether they've made payments to the Town of West Warwick, and that time I've learned that they, that we still have not officially, even though the, the council has approved the RFP, that they have not signed a contract. Is that correct, Ernie? And I know that some of the members of, of Curbside Textile Recycling are here, and they want to come forward and discuss some of the allegations that were brought forward.
We, we sent out checks
Just, just state your name, I'm sorry.
Before you move on, Ernie, do you have an update for the council? Do you want to give an update, or?
Discuss this at all, full hand, or?
Because from, and, and I just want to make this clear, I've received emails from you, I guess a former partner, and so I'm just trying to, you know, as, I'm, this is all going to be new to the council, I know both of you are here tonight, so please keep it cordial and respectful between the parties, because the town itself has an agreement with Curbside Textile Recycling. Whatever happens to partners or whatever, the town really can't get involved in that portion of it, so, again, so as of right now, you are curbside, curbside textile recycling?
Correct.
And representing, representing them.
And that still has not been signed?
Uh, correct. The contract is, I believe, still in draft form. It should be completed very shortly, and then it'll be ready to be signed.
Uh, just to clarify, so
If you, I'm sorry, if you could just state your names.
I'm sorry. Marjorie Mueller.
Melanie Flomond.
Thank you.
On 115, we made checks out for all of the clothing that we gathered between the period of 1110 and 1223. On 23, made out the checks for all the clothing that we gathered from 1223 to 131, and we have copies of all those checks. We are simply waiting for the contract to be signed before we pay the city of West Warwick.
You can approach if you want to give that to the council. And again, I want to clarify that, I mean, and I think, and Ernie made this clear in his, his email, that the town really has no say in any of those things, but to me, but to me, it would be, it would be important to me if it wasn't being done.
Exactly.
You know.
Right, as far as
It would affect the town.
Right, as far as the responsibilities under the request, you know, for proposals, as well as the contract is, the 12 cents per pound, and, and certain other stipulations, I mean, there has been discussion about going above and beyond that by curbside recycling, as to giving funds to local charities and nonprofit groups. Again, that's something that's above and beyond our scope and our relationship. That's something that is, would be done by the company and not a requirement of the town.
What is, what are the numbers based off of?
The poundage, poundage of clothing that we gather.
Because these, I mean, I just know that Angel in Action had a different number, so I'm just curious what
That was the first check.
Okay.
The first check was for $90.
Okay, this is, this is the newer one, then, since that
This is this last month.
This is, okay, since that point, okay.
Every bag that goes into the van, and then we collect from the Town of West Warwick, we have numbers and weights for everything.
Okay. I see, it's, it's February 3rd, I just looked at it now, yeah, okay.
So that's actually, those are our second checks that were going out in our second month of West Warwick.
And just for clarity, so these go out every, once a month then at that?
Once a month, yeah.
What is the holdup on the contract?
Because of discrepancies related to the corporate makeup, I mean, I think the contract is ready to go, I don't think there's anything else that needs to be changed, but just because of this little hurdle that's been resolved, based upon what the managers told me, I think it's ready to go. I don't think there's anything else that needs to be changed.
Is the RFP correct? I mean, would, because I know the names on, on the RFP were, were different owners, so I want to clarify before we go through it, just to make sure that it's binding with the names that are on, with on, on the contract.
Again, the, the internal mechanism of what's going on in that corporation, again, partners share, it has nothing to do with the contract, the contract is in the name of the entity, they're the entity, and like I said, I think we can move forward and have the council sign it.
Well, the town, well, we already awarded, so the town manager would sign it, yeah.
The signatures would be the, the representative of the company, the solicitor, myself.
Do you have any concerns at this point, Ernie?
The, when the proposal was submitted, it was correct. The company, there was a requirement for experience, and at that time, there was the experience when it was submitted. I believe that Curbside Recycling is now working in, not, not in conjunction with the city of Warwick, but they are working in the city of Warwick on their own, collecting materials, so, you know, the, from my understanding, they're performing there, and they have been performing here, so from, from my standpoint, there is really no, no reason to finalize the agreement and move forward under the terms that were specified and will be agreed to.
All right, um, and I know a former person in the group wants to come up and speak on that. Is that even allowed? It's just not
I think we have to wait till public comment.
This isn't, a public comment, absolutely, but
That's, that's what I'm saying.
As part of this issue, no, because again
For curbside textile recycling.
You're not, if they're involved in any type of claim issues, or conflict issues, or litigation, that's not for this body to
Don, you can go up there and public comment.
to discuss.
Anything else, Jay? Thank you very much.
The feasibility of the Town of West Warwick's entrance into the state of Rhode Island Municipal Employees Retirement System Pension Plan MERS sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson.
As I, as I said at the last meeting, we'll keep this as a standing agenda item, just so we're on top of it. Ernie, I don't know if you have any updates or?
Yes, as of today, communication from the state's actuary, they are in the process of finalizing the data. They indicated it should be done shortly. I inquired as to the, the process, will this go to the general treasurer first, will go to the town, will go to both, and they were not sure of, of how that is, but it is being finalized shortly, hate to give times, but, you know, 10 days, maybe, plus minus, so they're finalizing that, then it'll be through the distribution process, which we will find out what that is. And again, that will be reviewed at the state level, at the local level, and then to move forward, that would be items of, basically collective bargaining with the union, so that's the process, but it is, that is being finalized, and it should be completed shortly.
Okay. And Mary Ann, can we make sure that just stays as an, an agenda item? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for the update.
Upcoming appointments. So reuse appeals board alternate member with a term to expire 10/20/21, two term to expire 10/20/20, one term to expire 10/20/22, board of tenant affairs, one term to expire 2/20/21, public, one term to expire 11/20/21, public, one term to expire 3/20/22, recreation committee, two full members, pension board committee, one term to expire 11/18/20/20, one term to expire 11/18/20/21, and one term to expire 11/18/20/22. Public comment. This is the designated portion of the town council's open meeting for citizens to
Excuse me, Mr. President, before we move to public comment, I wanted to make a motion to move, close the executive session items. Item one, under section 42-46-4, 42-46-5, section A subsection two of the Rhode Island General Laws, the town council to convene into executive session, closed meeting to discuss joining Town of Barrington at ALs versus state of Rhode Island at AL, CA, number PC-2019-10870, Superior Court. Item two, under section 42-46-4, 42-46-5, section A subsection two of Rhode Island General Laws, the town council to convene into executive session, closed meeting to discuss the collective bargaining agreements with Rhode Island Council 94, AFSCME, ALF, CIO, West Warwick Town Employees Local 2045.
I have a motion to close those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Public comment. Designated portion of town council's open meeting for citizens to address comments to the town council relating to matters affecting the public business, RIGL 42-46-23 and RIGL 42-46-26. Comments will only be addressed to the town council, will take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address, please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested. Members of the town council, being the duly elected public body as identified in RIGL 42-46-23, have no obligation to respond to the public's comments.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tom Oates, Sixth Colonial Way. Two things. A few years ago, I was provided a password for the guest at the West Warwick Town Hall for the Internet, and since then, I've changed phones, and I never wrote the password down, of course. This, in, in order for anyone to follow along, because if, I mean, we get these agendas, and there's really not a lot on there, everything is in behind the scenes and without a phone to get it, that would be very helpful if you could provide that to me and to anyone else that would be interested in following along.
Mary Ann, if we have a guest password, if we can post it on the wall, just like any restaurant or wherever, can you just put the Wi-Fi password on there?
For some reason, I think it was WW with the zip code, but I can't make it work anymore, but
Well, we have
that was a long time ago.
We have our password, the council.
Right, and then there's guests.
There's, there's a guest network which is off the network, and we're on the network.
Right, so if we could get that, it'd be great. Thank you.
You can get that anytime from the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. Number two, I believe you people are probably aware of the situation at my late father's home last week. I've had issue with the DPD I've had issue with the DPW and the lack of communication in that office. I had called to request the larger bins, because when my dad took sick, there were a lot of people there, and I needed the bigger bins back and wanted to swap them out. I had to have at least six or seven phone calls to that office that always went to voicemail, and you leave the message, detailed message, and never got a return. Then my father passed away in January, and finally, I got Jason Lachardi, who is councilman, working on it, and he made some phone calls, and it was supposed to get done, and it was promised it was going to be done, and it wasn't done. Then it got a little escalated, I believe, from there, and then it was done. But when they came to deliver the larger trash cans and take the two small ones, they made a big U-turn across his lawn and stopped in the middle of the driveway to throw the cans out and continued and rolled off the lawn. It was a truck that did it, because where the lawn ends and the pavement, there's a big drop-off where they cut it up with a plow a few years back, and it wound up costing a lot of money to the town, because they had to replace the lawn and all the underground sprinklers that they ripped up out of the ground. I don't know what kind of damage these tire tracks have caused. I don't think a lot, I think it'll fluff up, but the fact is that they drove the truck a big, off of Old Carriage Road, they came down the hill, made a big arc across one side of the yard, over the driveway, across the other side of the yard, and down. And Mr. Lachardi has videotapes. West Warwick PD has been notified of malicious damage, and there's a report on file, and the police department also took a number of photographs of the ruts from the tire tracks. That happened that morning, the small cans were against the garage at 9:15 when I went to get tax papers, and they, the cans were still there. I came back in the afternoon about 2 o'clock, the big cans were there, the small cans were gone, and the ruts were there. It's not something I didn't notice before, it happened between 9:00 AM and 2:00 or 2:15, and it's when they dropped those cans off. And I believe it was, just someone was pissed off, because they probably got slapped down for not getting this job done and waiting all these months. I'm not the only one that complains about not being able to get through to the DPW. The phone never gets answered down there. Leave messages, you never get a return call. But I'd like to know where that stands and what's going to happen with whomever is responsible for this. It was just a childish act to drive a town truck up over that lawn.
Unfortunately, and I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
I'm not even, you know, I, I agree that.
I'll allow you to continue, I'm going to head back.
And the only thing is, we, whatever's happening, if Don, Don is aware of it, if he's addressing it, it's an employee matter.
Uh huh.
I can't sit here and tell you Joe Schmo was getting written up with the final written or terminated, that's, that, we can't do that.
Okay, I understand.
But, you know, I, I'm hoping it's being addressed, and I've, and trust me, that should not have happened, and nor should it ever happen to any resident, any councilman, or anybody that is requesting something. I don't disagree with you with the phone down there. It's not the first complaint, it's not the last.
Uh huh.
And I can guarantee that. You know, I'm hoping Don, Don can address that, and as the new director, and we can work, and hope he gets your situation resolved also.
Great, thank you.
Interestingly enough, we do know, I, we don't know about.
I didn't know about the, I didn't know about the ruts.
We did know about the situation. I didn't know it was you, my condolences on the passing of your father, I didn't realize that either. But we were made aware of it and clearly answering the phone, and if it was promised to be done, it should have been done, and I'm sure the director would agree with that. But I agree with David.
Councilman Lachardi's not here, but he did make it known to us.
Oh, yes, he, he informed me.
There's another situation on Ottawa Street, that with, with trash cans also.
Yes.
But nobody drove on the lawn.
But that being said, if it's, if it is an employee situation, that's not something we would discuss with you, and you understand that.
Yes, when I originally, the old man.
But it's unacceptable, yeah.
The old man, you know, wanted smaller cans, because he was by himself, him and his hound dog, and got the smaller cans, was easier for him, but when he took sick, there was a lot more activity. My wife and I moved in, so there was a lot more trash. I had to use the neighbor's trash cans every Tuesday, Monday night, putting the cans out. I'd take the extra, put it in the neighbor's trash cans, and, but we waited from October till last week, and he died January 3rd. So it, you know, it was a, a long time to wait to have this, the barrels swapped out. And I think that because it took so long, and the complaints were made, and it got escalated a bit, I think that's the reason, that somebody drove that truck up over the lawn in that manner.
I would hope not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Boucher, 44 Brat Lane. I have a concern, and it's not a criticism, it's an observation, and it's in regard to the public drunkenness ordinance that was rescinded because of pressure from the ACLU. I'm sure that we've all encountered somebody, if you live long enough, you'll encounter somebody who is drunk, and they can be, at times, a danger to themselves, a danger to others, and sometimes even a public nuisance. So we have such ordinances so that we can, for their own safety, pick them up. And now we can't do that, and this is something that kind of bothers me a little bit. I'm sure you went through all the procedures, but the, the problem is in regard to our sovereignty. It's our town. If we want to have a public drunkenness ordinance, we should be able to have it without getting any pressure from anybody higher up. It's a reasonable law, and I think, generally speaking, it's unfortunate that it has been rescinded, but it's something that I think that we need to watch out for. You know, we always seem to be whittling away a little at a time, our sovereignty as a town, our sovereignty as a county, our sovereignty as a state. It seems that we are constantly surrendering a little bit more to the state, and the state is surrendering a little bit more to the federal government all the time. Another example is MERS. Now, I, I'm sure that this is probably more efficient, and this is probably a little bit cheaper, but again, more and more is going to the state. It may not be in the citizen's best interest to do that. We know what's good for our town, because we live in it. And so with that in mind, I just wanted to express that concern and give you something to think about, if it's worth thinking about. Thank you.
And that, and thank you, Chris, because that was a first reading. The ACLU did send us a letter, I received it, I read it closely, and I forwarded to legal, because it was, it was above me, and Al was the person I forwarded to, and he felt that that change needed to be done, based upon people's rights also. So we can look at it again next meeting, we can discuss it if we need to, and go from there. Thank you again for bringing that up. Don?
Good evening, Don Marianni. I have retained an attorney on this, Richard Nicholson, so I cannot speak too much about what took place. I can say regarding the bid, when you guys put it out to bid, one of the requirements were that the company would have to have experience in textile recycling. The company that is on the bid about to be signed has no experience. My name was used as, to get the bid, as my 18 years of experience, but if you look back, I was never an owner. This company has no experience, nothing. Also, keep in mind that my attorney is also, before you go further, Attorney Nicholson, which is going to be calling in a couple of days, he came down with the flu, is looking to dissolve the company legally, regarding all the paperwork that I have, of all the fraud that took place. So, again, I can't say too much, because I have an attorney, he recommended it, and I'd not say much, but take that note.
All right, thank you. Mr. V?
John Reed, 62 Andrews Avenue. I think I set the bar a little high, but before I start, you're absolutely right. The check was not cashed, so I'm going to. Right, because after I looked into my.
Just speaking to my.
After I looked into the paperwork that I had, you're correct, it wasn't, that was my error. But I don't think anybody really, and I'm, like I said, I might have set the bar too high, because I tried to get you people to look at this, find the facts, it's the town paperwork, and come to a conclusion. He escaped, okay, that was a nice ploy that was done, but, okay. In the paperwork, okay, provide, install appropriate internal surface material, example, wood fiber material, et cetera, to the depth of 12 inches. In the RFP, okay, provide and install approximately 228 linear feet, four-foot-high chain link fence with a handicapped accessible gate. What am I missing? Your town planner says it was not in any specs. It's right there, in his own RFP. So how do you believe this? You have the papers.
We have everything you have. We have.
Okay, do you have the memorandum from the committee?
Yes.
Okay. So the $10,000 people is not there. You have the other people that added their numbers correctly. You have another vendor that added an addendum that for X amount of money, he would upgrade the fence because there were no specs given on the chain link fence. There were no specs given on anything. And if any of you, and, and I'm not going to argue, we're going to have a peaceful conversation. This contract, this is not a contract. In the RFP, it states, when we do a contract, in the contract, at the contract, bup, 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 contract. Okay, I got to think back, there is no contract. You have no contract between the town of West Warwick and a vendor, okay? Also, Mr. Williamson will more than be happy to tell you, that provision for prevailing wage certified payroll, that's not a joke, okay? But yet, nobody's being held accountable again. This is why we keep going down this road, because my obligation is to give you people some information.
So going back to that prevailing wage, we looked into it, I found out whose department's responsible for it. It's not the planner's responsibility, as everybody thinks it is.
Well, no, I don't care, who, it's somebody.
But again, it's being addressed, and we're dealing with it.
Okay, but I mean, this is a municipality. When I get a response, they don't know what I'm talking about, how embarrassing that is for you people. Okay, now, say this guy didn't pay prevailing wage, you didn't check on it. You think the Division of Taxation is just going to say, oh, sorry, municipality, why should you know about that? Why should you know that you have to record it and send it to them? No, Mickey the dope over here is going to come over and tell you. All right, then let's talk about incompetency. $5,600. The committee decided not to go to the first vendor, O'Brien, and purchase the equipment, because basically, they said it would be too complicated. To pick up the phone, the guy already gave you a bid, to call up, verify the materials, verify the price, okay, and say, is it, what's the availability? First question answered. I will schedule it with the contractor, call the contractor, put them together, save $5,600. I do it five times a day, most of the time on my phone. Next time you need this done, I'll do a cheat, $2,000 for 15 minutes, I'll do a cheat, okay? But the town decides $5,600, they don't have enough time. We're, we're rich, town's got a lot of money. Isn't that a little foolish? You know, and the rest of it, you know, it's going to, it's, it's not dead here. I wanted you people to grab it and do something with it, okay? You let him sit here and, I don't know, I'm glad I don't sit there, because he would have heard from me, he just looked in your face and lied to you, and you can't deny it. It says here the opposite of what he says, and he wrote it. But you're going to believe it, really? He needs some erasers on his pencil, because that's what they put in there for mistakes. Maybe he only writes winning, because he's perfect. But I'm sorry, this is all getting forwarded to the next level, because it didn't get fixed yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Plaza, 5 Robin Lane, and I'm going to be very short. My compliments to Mrs. Williamson, because she seems to be taking an interest in this and looking at it and asking pertinent questions. We talked about the surface, et cetera. Everything that I've seen, your resolution says, an ADA compliant playground. I have to ask a simple question, is that playground ADA compliant? You know the answer, you don't have to answer it to me. I've also had it thrown out that the taxpayers are going to pick up the tab to make it right. As a taxpayer, I get very upset, I've raised this issue before. I asked the question, was there a performance bond associated with this project? When was it issued? How much was it for? Was the firm released from it? To me, those funds should be used to take care of that. And, you know, how much does it take to go over and over and over again and bring these items up? I was out in town today, maybe you should go out in town and look at other items, because the issues of ADA compliance has been raised before. Mr. Goslin raised an issue about a certain location about a month or two ago. Go take a look, Mr. Goslin, tell me that complies.
Refresh my memory.
You talked about, um.
Refresh my memory.
I believe it's in your ward, I'm not sure, maybe it has to do with a playground.
That playground's not open to the public yet. Should not have been open to the public.
It is. You couldn't fool me.
Well, again, it should not, it had caution tape around it, and it was not open to the public.
There's no caution tape around it, just to let you know.
Again, the last time I was there was pre-winter, when they installed the playground, and there was caution tape, and that has not been approved or opened to the public, should not have been open or approved unless somebody took the tape down.
When I showed up to look at the site. Within 10 minutes, certain town employees showed up there, and they said, oh, you better not be taking pictures, I hope there's not little kids around here. There's no little kids there, but there's no caution tape, and as I've said before, this isn't even close, and Mr. Carrulo was there. The issue of not having him here to answer questions, because you know we were going to come up and ask questions.
Oh, I wish he didn't walk out, but he walked out.
To me, to me, court collusion comes in, I'm not sure this is you.
Mr. Plaza, could you go back to the microphone, please?
I thought my voice carried.
Maybe not, I'm not feeling well. But to have the director come up here, give his spiel, and then walk off when the public wasn't able to rebut his statements, because I'm sure Mr. Reed would have sliced and diced him, because he has the facts, as opposed to, you know, where's the performance bond? Where's the contract? Was there a change order issued? Having been in the Navy for 23 years, anytime a contract, contract is changed, there's a change order which increases price. Were there any change orders issued for this? I'm not going to put in a, app a request, you people can do that. But as a taxpayer, I'm very, very, very upset. And one other item, back to New London Avenue, the water's up there again, and the question is, it's not so much the ice now, but are we going to have a sinkhole on New London Avenue?
Don's working on that, we got an update on that over the past couple of days, and he's, yes, he did send an email, I'm, I'm not sure if the entire council, I'll double check it.
I'll give you an update.
If you want to. But I, I received an update on it, and I, I thought the entire council was on it. So, again, two weeks ago, there was no water. We, we were all like.
For, for a long time.
And we're like, where's the water?
Yeah, it was frozen, maybe.
And then all of a sudden, there's the water again.
But.
And he has his concerns, he's an engineer, he's going to work on it, it's just a matter of when and how.
And just, again, Mrs. Williamson, you're developing a fan here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Derek Reed, 62 Andrews Ave. So the last meeting, Mary Beth, you said you were going to keep this on the agenda, with this playground, until we get to the answers.
Mm-hmm.
Tonight, we didn't get the answers. I'm going to tell you, we didn't get the answers. So, as a council, per charter, and I hope it doesn't change in the next charter, you have the right to put the town official under oath. I would like Mr. Carrulo to. I would like Mr. Carullo to put under oath at the next town council meeting to discuss this playground, and I would like the public to be able to ask questions and get the answers from the man who put the project together, and from the man that wrote the contract, and whoever else would like to answer questions. But I feel that you guys were lied to tonight. I did a lot of homework on this playground. I did a lot of everything. A lot of the information I found, a lot of the information I knew. I told David Goslin today on telephone, if Mr. Zimulinski would have returned his emails, we probably wouldn't be standing here tonight, okay? I sent it to him, the entire report that we came up with, myself and a licensed architect. I got an answer from town manager that he would be reviewing and getting back to me. That was on a Friday. He had then sent it to me at four-thirty, said I would get it again on Monday. I haven't heard from him yet. So, I'm not interested in hearing from you tonight.
Well, that's fine, because I can comment if I want to.
I didn't come here to argue, okay? I'm just saying, this is a major issue. Ten thousand dollars, one dollar, fifty cents, it doesn't matter. There's no explanation yet for it. Next meeting, I think we need to discuss it again, till we're the public can discuss with it. And I'm, as a taxpayer, asking the town council what the charter says. Have the clerk put that man under oath, and let him answer the questions. Because tonight, he stood here nervous and anything because I was watching him while he's lying to you. And I'll tell him he's lying if he's standing right here, okay?
Mr. Reed, with the email you're mentioning, was that the one that was like at nine-thirty at night?
No. I don't believe so.
The one that, the one that you asked for a response, and the next day, a complaint was filed with the ADA, the Governor's Commission for ADA. Is that the timeline?
Um, no, because the timeline was on a Friday.
Right, and then it was...
And then on Monday, I didn't hear from you, like you said.
Well, I have a timeline and emails as well.
I have a timeline also, Mr. Manager.
I do too.
Bottom line is...
And you filed, it was filed when you emailed me?
No, it was not filed.
The day after, the second day?
Do your homework, let me know.
Oh, I do know. Again, and again, Mr. Carullo here was to address the item that was on the agenda, and he did. It was about the bidding process and the amount of the bid and the process. And again, if you look at this, the person bid one forty-five. That was his total cost, and that's what was awarded for the contract.
Where? Show me where. And get the calculator out, too.
Okay. The bid, it wasn't the bid for the total project. The total project was for, what, one forty-five? Is that correct?
No, one thirty-five-six.
What was the total?
That's what my calculator says.
For two items.
For two items.
It says those...
For the two items.
What was, what was the cost for the total? The install of the equipment and the equipment. And then there was a total cost, right? And there's a total cost that the town council passed, five-oh, of one hundred and forty-five thousand.
You approved it not to exceed. You didn't say that was the number. It says not to exceed. That wasn't the number. The number was one thirty-five-six on the contract, not even the contract, on the bid. The town council, during the meeting, to approve the funds was to not exceed one forty-five-six. Didn't mean we had to hit that number because the number wasn't on the other papers. The other thing is, it doesn't matter until, if you want to challenge me on this, I'm challenging you right now, if you want to challenge me, produce the contract, produce the signed contract, and then we can talk. Have a nice night.
Any other public comment? Don, you want us to focus on this?
Don Willett, Director of Public Works, went through our files down on the DPW, and I was able to answer several questions that were brought up. We own half of the road. There is, the property or the town line is actually through the center line of the road. However, in the agreement, when you separated from Warwick and became West Warwick, there was an agreement that we would take care of the maintenance of the road. They would take care of the maintenance, I believe it's Quakers or, there's a couple of roads that they got in the, in the mixture. So, we are responsible for the road, we are responsible for all that work. As an engineer, I wanted to find out if we have any borings or have any kind of engineering drawings. We found a folder in the record that basically said that you had a company called Gaffola Engineering, and they did a bunch, Gaffola, that they did a bunch of borings. And so, what I'm trying to get is the boring logs. I got them this evening, and unfortunately, I can't read them on my phone. I'm going to have to sit down in the office. So, that'll be a job that I'll try to tackle on Thursday, just to find out, is there ledge up there? If there's ledge up there, then that significantly changes what I can and cannot do up there. We will dig safe it, probably in the next couple of weeks, just to find out where all the utilities are. We know that on the, as you're going up the hill on the right-hand side, we know that there are two water mains that go up that, and we know that the sewer main goes up through the center line. We could not find gas line up there. Don't know if there's gas there or not, but again, we'll have a dig safe, so that will help us out. If we were to turn around and try to develop some kind of an under-drain system to get it to drain to the bottom of the hill, it's going to be a thousand thirty-two feet of piping, it's going to be three structures, it's going to be police details, it's going to be stone, it's going to be asphalt, and a lot of that is incumbent whether we have funding for it. So, that will be the next question. As I told Ernie, I will try to have an estimate together by Friday. I do it quicker, but I'm actually tied up in a water quality training right now. The, I have concerns about that particular area. I'm afraid that if I dig it now to try to do some exploration, that I can make the situation even worse. And I'd rather deal with water right now and ice right now than deal with a major sinkhole that I can't repair until the spring, or to turn around and get into a situation where I can't get asphalt. You don't have any asphalt plants open, or if you do, they're open for a day or two, and you just, you just can't count on that. So, with all of those concerns, and I still haven't talked with Jeremiah, who's been the town engineer for us and for Kent Water, because I know they did some work up there, and I want to see what their field notes are, it's going to take some investigation. And if any civil engineer got up here and turned around and said he's willing to do this without any subsurface exploration, they shouldn't be hired. You really need to turn around and do your homework before you turn around and make a massive project out of that. And if I started the project up there and I started working my way down but ran into ledge, you know, what do you do then? So, there's some issues. I also found in the records that this project problem hasn't been just the last year or two. We actually have letters dating back to nineteen ninety-eight that says that there was a water issue in that location, so...
I've asked a couple of times, is it possible to get signage, some kind of warning?
We did.
Is there one going up the hill, though? Because that's what I requested.
I think we got one on both sides, but I'll have it double-checked.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay? So, we did measure it up. We do have a concept plan, but I have to do some more research before I turn around and make a move on trying to get anything done.
No, and personally, I think I said that because once you open it, you don't know what you're opening.
Right.
And that leak, that could be up the top of it, who knows?
And it's really, it's really confusing to, you have two water lines that go up and a sewer line that go up. If they bedded those trenches, like they should bed them, that should be a French drain to run all that water down the hill. You only have that one blowout right by the golf course, and you have nothing further down. You have nothing on the west side of the street. So, again, it's very odd, I guess is the right word for it.
It's a mystery.
All right?
When were those borings done? Are they...
Uh, two thousand and five.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And the, or in that time, it might be plus or minus a year, but...
They're not, they're not recent, or when they had...
Right. But ledge doesn't move, or at least it doesn't move dramatically. I did look at one that said it was four feet. They hit refusal, which means they hit a ledge at that point, so, okay?
Thank you. Before, if you're going to stick around for a few minutes after, I got to talk to you about something.
Sure.
I have one more thing to add. So, we'll go to the emails. On August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, Mrs. Zimulinski emailed me this. It says, "Good evening, Derek. I did receive your emails dated eight-eleven-nineteen, eight-thirteen-nineteen, eight-fifty-nineteen, eight-eighteen-nineteen. I will respond to them by Friday evening. I understand that the issues that you raise are important to you, and you believe they are important to the community. You are passionate about your issues, and there are other people that have issues they are as equally passionate about theirs. This afternoon, I had an older couple stop in, and wanted to discuss a problem that was important to them. We spoke for about thirty-five minutes. I could not help them but suggested an alternative that might help. The reality is that every day brings more issues and problems that need attention and responses need to be prioritized. When I accepted the position of town manager, I knew most of the challenges that laid ahead. I made a commitment to help improve the fiscal condition and departmental operations of the town. I am of a generation that honors commitments. Once you receive my responses to your emails, if you would like to meet with, to discuss them with me, I would be pleased to do so. I hope you have a good rest of the evening." Well, that was the end of it. I haven't heard since. Now, it says at the top, and I quote, "I did receive your emails dated blah, blah, blah. I will respond to them by Friday evening." Friday never came, so, quite well.
Because, as I said, every day, more issues come in, more issues come in.
So, I'm not falling.
And, well, when, when was the complaint filed with the Governor's...
I can't tell you because I didn't make the complaint.
Well, when was it filed? It was written by Brian Munio, given to, I think, Mr. Palazzo, and what date was that? Do you remember? Was it like April, was it August fifteenth?
August sixth, a little.
Okay. And your email about the playground was when?
I don't even know.
Okay, so...
So, the email about the playground was eight-eleven-nineteen.
Okay. So, you're asking for a response, and again, and you had a variety of issues, as I recall, in addition to this. And as I go about doing my work, basically, I work late often, I work weekends trying to get items done and prioritize. And I will tell you that when you're asking a question about the playground, and then with the information that I think was in the email, some of the specifics, and at the same time, relatively close to it, a complaint is filed using the same type of verbiage, you know, it puzzles me as to what is going on.
So, that gives you the right to just ignore me?
What is going on here? Is a game being played? What is going on? And quite frankly, I don't have time for that.
Mr. Manager, let me interject, because in all due respect, the complaint was filed. You guys have all shared up here that you've all met up there. Don't deny that.
No, I'm not denying that.
The complaint was filed.
Yeah.
We have sat here as a council, have addressed this complaint.
Yeah.
You and the crowd.
Yeah.
Mr. Palazzo and whoever else filed the complaint was in the crowd, not, even, sometimes you're not happy with the answers. But we've been giving the answers right away, but what you're saying is because, he's addressed those answers here in public, on record, on tape, but he didn't reply back to your email fast enough. But since that complaint's been filed, we as a council...
How about the rest of the issues, David?
I don't know about the...
How about the forty-seven...
I'm addressing...
How about the forty-seven-page report from DEM?
Mr. Reed?
I'm not doing this with you again. I did this with you today.
Point of privilege, this is way out of mine.
We'll end it here.
I'm going to end it here.
Because...
Because I'm not getting into it with you.
I'm not getting into it with you either. I'm saying, we have responded as a council...
That's fine, but what about the rest of it? What about all the other emails that go to him?
What are they?
I have them.
Okay, then share them.
We got a forty-seven-page report from DEM of violations down there that I gave to him.
This is the problem. Derek, every time we're addressing one issue, you pull another issue out of the box, then another issue out of the box, and we can't get one issue resolved because, guess what? You got another issue. That's every time you're up here, another issue. Everybody else seems to be one issue at a time.
I'm sorry there's so many issues in this town.
Okay.
Do something about it.
But again, we're discussing the issue of the pocket, and you're saying that he never responded. We as a council have taken public comment. We have listened. We've taken the complaint.
And what I tell you today, you're going to continue to listen.
But we've addressed the complaint. We've continued to do what we're supposed to be doing, okay?